Everyone, we will now open up our St. Lucie County School Board's regular meeting. This is the date, February the 8th, at 5:00 p.m. Would you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and directly after the Kids at Hope?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Kids at Hope, Treasure Hunters pledge.
As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
You may be seated. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go right into our Special Order of Business. We have quite a bit to cover this evening, so we'll go right into that. Mr. Jen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening to everybody. I will call on Ms. Lydia Martin, who is already on the spot and ready to take over. Ms. Martin?
Good evening. Dr. Mills, School Board Member, Superintendent Jen. At this time, I'd like to invite April Griffin from the Florida School Boards Association to come to the podium to make her presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. It's my pleasure tonight to be here representing the Florida School Boards Association to present this plaque to you in recognition of your earning Master Board distinction from the Florida School Boards Association. The Master Board program is governance team training for the school board and the superintendent. It is designed to strengthen the governance team's ability to work effectively and efficiency -- efficiently, sorry, while staying focused on student achievement. By earning this distinction, you have demonstrated dedication to professional development, your students, and your district. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. April.
If y'all don't mind.
You can go down.
Yes, Board members, we'd like to invite you down, and then we have a few more items that will have you remain down here for some photos.
Who gets to stay next to me? Congratulations. She's coming. I should give them a hand. I refuse to have this wheelchair in my kitchen.
to the podium, who will provide you with an update on some Education Foundation items.
Thank you, Lydia, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Mr. Superintendent. The Foundation's largest program each year for the last 20 years has been our Teacher Grant Program, and we're proud to have raised a total of $1.3 million during that time. And this year, we raised and we're going to give to the school district a check for $106,624, which is a record in the last 20 years. Last year was also a record, and that was $73,000, so it's grown quite a bit, and it's really due to a partnership that we have with the schools. And our goal next year is to raise $90,000 and take the whole match. Every year, each Ed Foundation throughout Florida has an opportunity for a state matching grant, and our portion has been growing every year because of the growth of the district is $90,000. So if we raise $90,000 next year, I will be back with a check for $180,000. And really, to help raise that money, we've created a new fundraiser called the Wharton Smith Fund Run, which will raise funds for schools during March and April, and each school that is a part of this will have their funds matched. And the Fund Run will run on -- will be held on Saturday, April 30th, at the Safety Festival at Clover Park, and everyone's welcome to come. And this is a color Fun Run, so I'd love to see Mr. Jen walk and run with us and get splashed with color on April 30th.
You're used to that?
You're used to that? Okay, thank you. So I'd just like to recognize Jim All and Jerry Kelly from Wharton Smith. And Jim, if you don't mind, just come on up here just for 15 seconds, just say a few words, and then we'll just come over for pictures. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. I am here with Jerry Kelly, our Director of Operations. I just want to say thank you. This is a true honor and a privilege to be here again. It's very surreal, on a personal and a professional level, to be back again here and continue our support for the Foundation. Thank you for involving us. Thank you for inviting us back, and we're happy to be involved. Thank you so much, Tom.
We'll do photo ops now. Jim, Tom.
Also, Brandon Noble from the Board is here, and James Taylor. Folks who want to just step up and join? Okay, thank you.
We're going to switch the chairs. I stay there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is the check for the matching grant.
That is a real camera.
We have just one more item for a photo. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Michelle Gillard, Coordinator of Mental Health, Psychological, and Social Services, to the podium to provide recognition of one of our wonderful and generous community partners.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Jen, thank you for this opportunity to recognize our ongoing collaboration with the Episcopal Church of the Nativity. For the past five years, the Church has provided food baskets at Thanksgiving, Christmas, and Easter to many of our St. Lucie Public Schools' families. These food baskets contain a complete holiday meal, including a gift card for a turkey, and often other pantry staples as well. This important partnership began under the leadership of Reverend Mary Rosendahl and continues with Mother Tracy Duggar. The committee spearheading this work at the Church is led by Mary Justice, with Susan Montgomery, Dennis Gallagher, Nella Morgan, Sadie Chin, Carol Young, Dottie Johnson, and Jack Johnson, supporting those efforts. Each time the committee prepares the food baskets, Mary contacts us to make sure that our students and families are included. This year, despite all of the difficulties faced by many during the pandemic, throughout Thanksgiving and Christmas, they provided 23 food baskets to our families and Christmas gifts for 10 children. We know that our families are grateful for the support, but the gift truly is ours. Thank you again to our friends at the Church and the Nativity. Our community is stronger with you in it.
At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Kevin Perry, Assistant to the Superintendent, to the podium to share some information with you about African American History Month.
Madam Chair, School Board Member, Superintendent Jen, African American History Month is the brainchild of Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a noted scholar and academician with an earned PhD from Harvard University, who originally started Negro History Week in 1926. Florida Statute 1003.42, amended in 2002, is the law that mandates the teaching of African and African American history through the infusion model. Each year, we celebrate events that are planned nationwide honoring the history and contributions of African Americans. The theme for Black History Month 2022 is Black Health and Wellness. Here to present the African American History Month proclamation is one of St. Lucie's own, who is an honors graduate, 2018 honors graduate of Lincoln Park Academy and Indian River State College, where she earned her AA degree, and also a 2020 graduate of Florida Agricultural and Mechanical University. In that same year, she joined the cast at Cast and quickly became a rising star, as she was named the school's Outstanding First Year Teacher. She went on to be named the 2021 Outstanding First Year Teacher for St. Lucie Public Schools, my beautiful goddaughter, Jewel Edwards.
Whereas the School Board of St. Lucie County takes pride in joining Americans throughout the country and various parts of the world in recognizing February 2022 as National African American History Month. And whereas African American History Month celebrates the contributions that African Americans have made to American history. And whereas National African American History Month had its origin in 1915 and was initiated in 1926 by Dr. Carter G. Woodson as Black History Week, as it coincided with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass, two key figures in the history of African Americans. And whereas in 1976, the commemoration of Black history in the United States was expanded to Black History Month. And in 1986, President Reagan proclaimed, "The foremost purpose of Black History Month is to make all Americans aware of the struggle for freedom and equal opportunity, and it deepens our understanding of our nation's history." And whereas in 1994 and 2002, the Florida Legislature passed legislation to ensure that African American history content is taught in schools, and St. Lucie Public Schools continues to take the necessary steps toward the infusion of African and African American history curriculum as part of the content taught and studied in pre-K through grade 12. And whereas, this year's theme focuses on the importance of Black health and wellness. This theme acknowledges the legacy of not only Black scholars and medical practitioners in the Western medicine, but also in other ways in which the Black community has contributed throughout healthcare, such as birth workers, doulas, midwives, naturopaths, herbalists, and so much more. It also includes initiatives to build hospitals, medical and nursing schools, and community clinics, as well as initiatives to help decrease disparities by having more diverse practitioners and representation in all segments of the medical and health programs. Furthermore, the 2022 theme considers activities, rituals, and initiatives that Black communities have practiced in an effort to maintain health and well-being. And whereas, it is appropriate to call upon schools and the community to observe the month of February with programs, activities, and ceremonies. And for the School Board of St. Lucie County to recognize and promote these observances district-wide. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of St. Lucie County does hereby declare February 2022 as African American History Month. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, we respect and request that you ask the Board to adopt this.
Recommend the Board approve the proclamation as submitted.
Seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? Ananemously voted for approving it. Five to zero.
At this time, I'd like to invite Heather Clark, Director of Student Services, to the podium to talk about Student Services Week, as well as introduce the speakers for the Secondary National School Counselor Week.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Jen. This evening, we are recognizing February 7th through the 11th as Student Services and National School Counseling Weeks. Our Student Services personnel play an integral role in our school community. Student Services staff include our school nurses and health workers, school health staff, school psychologists, social workers, school counselors, and school-based mental health counselors. These staff provide a comprehensive range of services to help students overcome their barriers to learning. They do this through improving students' physical, mental, social, emotional, and behavioral health, as well as increasing the role of parents as partners in their children's schooling. The work that they do improves the level of engagement that students bring to the classroom to maximize the benefits of instruction delivered by teachers. We are grateful for the dedication and hard work that each of these professionals exhibits each and every day in our schools. And this evening, I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce Ms. Nikki Poole. Come on up. Nikki is our Coordinator of Secondary School Counseling and Advisory, and Ms. Lilia Nidel, she is our MTSS Specialist in Elementary Guidance. They are school counselors by trade, and they are going to read the National School Counseling Proclamation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. The American School Counselor Association celebrates National School Counseling Week the first week of February every school year. We aim to bring the same celebration to St. Lucie Public Schools, to recognize the tireless efforts made by school counselors across our school district each and every day through this proclamation as follows. Whereas, school counselors work with students to help them reach their full potential. And whereas, school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, as these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas, school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves.
And whereas, school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. And whereas, school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And whereas, comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in schools. Therefore, St. Lucie Public Schools hereby proclaims February 7th through the 11th, 2022, as National School Counseling Week. Mr. Superintendent, we ask you and the Board to approve this proclamation.
Recommend the Board approve the proclamation as submitted.
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero unanimously.
All right, at this time, I'd like to invite Alicia Seitz, Director of Career and Technical Education, along with Marianna Lewis, CTE teacher and Teacher of the Year from St. Lucie West Centennial High School, to share information with you about the CTE Month and the CTE Month proclamation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Mr. Jen. This is February Career Technical Education Month, and this proclamation is from Governor Ron DeSantis. Whereas, career and technical education, CTE, serves as the backbone of a strong, well-educated workforce, offers lifelong learning opportunities, and contributes to Florida's leaders in the nation and international marketplace. And whereas, increasing the availability to all Floridians of high-quality CTE programs and credentials has been a priority of this administration since the beginning. And...
Whereas, in 2019, this administration issued Executive Order 1931 to ensure for high-quality CTE programs by commissioning an annual audit of all CTE programs, resulting in the phase-out of over 500 programs that no longer align to meet industry demand. And whereas, House B1111507 provides a clear blueprint for a massive expansion of CTE and the integration of all workforce services in view of a more seamless and accessible experience for Floridians in need of training or upskilling. And whereas, CTE provides Floridians with a school-to-career connection, helping students experience practical and meaningful applications of numerous skills. And whereas, secondary schools in all 67 school districts, all 28 Florida colleges, and 48 technical colleges and centers offer high-quality CTE coursework, certifications, skills-based education, degrees, and co-curricular programs. And whereas, more than 772,000 K-12 CTE students, representing the highest number of CTE students enrolled at the K-12 level in the state's history, more than 338,000 post-secondary CTE students, and 15,700 registered apprentices in Florida engage in this type of meaningful education. And...
Whereas, expanded access to high-quality apprenticeship programs by registering over 50 new programs since 2019, for a total of over 300 programs, and increasing the number of apprentices to over 15,500, up nearly 33% since 2018. And...
Whereas, more than 484,000 secondary students are enrolled in one of over 1,800 registered career and professional education academies, and more than 15,100 registered career-themed courses. And...
Whereas, in 2021, Florida's K-12 students earned over 168,000 industry certifications and over 59,000 digital tool certificates from 2018. And whereas, 118 million in CARES Act dollars, including Governors' emergency education relief funds, were awarded to Florida's college and districts to increase enrollment and completion in high-quality, in-demand, CTE short-term credentialing program. And whereas, a $35 million investment in Florida's rapid credentialing grant program has allowed public post-secondary system institutions to award over 18,000 industry certifications or certificates to unemployed or underemployed COVID-19-impacted workers in less than a year. And whereas, in 2021, a Florida college system conferred nearly 38,000 rapid credentials and approximate 7% increase from 2018, 2019. And whereas...
Florida has invested over $30 million from the Job Grant Growth Fund this fiscal year to expand training in critical logistics, commercial vehicle driving programs, nursing programs, and other high-demand professions to meet immediate supply chain and workforce needs.
Now, therefore, I, Ron DeSantis, Governor of the State of Florida, do hereby extend greetings and best wishes to all observing February 2022 as Career and Technical Education Month in Florida. We ask the Board and Mr. Jen to adopt this proclamation.
Recommend the Board adopt the proclamation as submitted.
So moved. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion again carries unanimously, five to zero.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to move forward with our STAR Awards for the month of February. The first one is Idella Siplin. She is a technical support desk specialist and was nominated by Principal Susan Seal. Ms. Seal states that any time help desk assistance is needed, Idella is always so friendly and calm. That's the first step to alleviating the anxiety that many may feel when calling the help desk. She is always knowledgeable, and if she doesn't know the answer, which of course is rare, she works diligently to find the answer and conveys it as quickly as she can to get the information. It is for this reason that she should be awarded the STAR Award, so congratulations to Ms. Siplin. Next, we have Amy Rogers, who is a site maintenance worker at both the North County Transportation and also Performance-Based Preparatory Academy. She was nominated by Supervisor Carolyn Rarick. She states that Amy works the 6:30 to 3 o'clock shift, and when schools are short of staff, she is always the first one to volunteer to pick up an evening shift to make sure that we are maintaining the cleaning and disinfecting standards. Not many custodial staff members are as flexible as she is, and she is by far the person to work the most double shifts. She's always available to help and does so with a smile. Thank you, Amy, for helping to keep -- helping to ensure a safe and clean teaching and learning environment for our students and teachers. So congratulations, Amy. And that concludes our STAR Awards, as well as our Special Orders of Business.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lydia. We will now move forward to our easel report. Mr. David Freeman, welcome to the podium.
Good evening, Chairwoman Mills, Board Members, and Superintendent Jen. Just a quick story. A few weeks ago, I got a call, and that call was from Superintendent Jen, who called to let me know that he was going to be retiring. And I had mixed emotions after 40 or so years working for the children around the state, many of that here in St. Lucie County, accomplishing the things that we've accomplished here in the county, which I won't enumerate because I would need notes, the list is so long, but we've heard it several times over the past few weeks as people discuss this. I felt that, you know, it's fair to let the guy go. He should retire. On the other hand, I felt that we were losing an important asset, somebody who had worked closely with the union to accomplish many of those things, to most recently get through the COVID pandemic. I say through, we're not really through it yet, but to get to where we are in that, to continue to work to forge a bridge of communications between the district partners and the union partners to accomplish these things. And since this is the first time I've had a chance to publicly speak, I want to say congratulations. Certainly, it's well-deserved, but we'll miss you, definitely here in the union. I think the Board will, the teachers will, the district will miss you. But it left me with... you. But it left me with a little bit of an empty feeling inside, and that's not to say we always agree. As you know, in fact, if we always agreed, I would think one of us wasn't doing our jobs. So it's not that, it's that it was always an open line of communication and that we accomplished many things. But then last night, we found out who our new superintendent would be. And as Dr. Prince said last night, part of his job is to operationalize the vision that the superintendent has. So a lot of those accomplishments also were with Dr. Prince, who also worked with us through himself and his teams to deal with the day-to-day concerns that would come up. And so I want to congratulate you, Dr. Prince. I certainly think it's a good choice. It will continue, hopefully, the trajectory that we've started here under Mr. Gent, and I think that's a great thing. And so congratulations to both of you. Mr. Gent, thank you for the years that you've given to the district and to the employees and the students here. Having said that, I also want to mention another short story. A few weeks ago, I did an interview. I was asked, how are things going? And as interviews go, they talk to you for 30 minutes, they clip out 20 seconds and put it up. But one of the things that I said in the interview was that I think things are going smoothly, relatively smoothly, I think, was the word that I said. And I went home and I thought about it, and I thought to myself, if I was home watching my leader, as a union leader, whoever, say that, I'd be upset, because the truth of the matter is, we've done amazing work keeping the buildings from falling down around us, so to speak, during COVID. You know, we went out to, I think it was West Gate, and there were seven district people there to cover teachers who were out due to COVID. We have done amazing things to take care of that. So this is in no way shorting the district for the work that they've done. We've done amazing things to keep things going. But I think we run the risk of falling into a narrative that some people in Tallahassee are pushing that by forcing students back in and giving us no choices, we've done a good thing, things are back to normal. And things most certainly are not back to normal. We know that, but I think it's important that we don't fall into that trap of saying things are going smoothly. Things are going relatively smoothly, the best that they could be. One of the things that I have noticed, and this is common across the state during this time, is that we've had a number of employees who come and then they leave. And again, we have fewer than potentially our sister counties across the state, but that's something that's going on. And so I'll take this opportunity to issue maybe the first challenge to our incoming superintendent, to the school board, and to the union, to first of all, be careful that we don't fall into a narrative that actually may do us a disservice down the line. And secondly, to continue to work and to work harder and to be partners in making St. Lucy a place where people not only want to come, but where they want to stay. We know we've got schools in the district where teachers and staff fight to get to them. Once they're there, they will never leave. I want to make this district that kind of place where people want to come and where they want to stay. And it's not just about money, and we've done pretty good with the money situation under Mr. Gent and the negotiating team for the district and the union. But there's other things we have to look forward to or look to do. For instance, be honest with the narrative, to be sure we're respecting time and task and professionalism that's out there. And, you know, I'm not saying we don't do that, but again, I want to work hard. My challenge is to make this a place that does it. It's to you, to you, and to the union. I think we have to work as partners to do that. And so that's, again, all I want to say for this evening. I want to thank you, as always, for the time I'm allowed to speak here. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman, and thank you for that EASL report. Is Martha Vickus here to give the CWA or anyone else to represent CWA this evening? Okay, seeing none, then we'll go straight to our St. Lucy Public Schools Youth Advisory Council. Mr. Christian Backa, would you please come forward and give your report?
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Gent. This past month, our council held our regular January meeting at Port Pierce Central High School, where we examined several instances of potential expansions in student equity, primarily in the equity and accessibility to educational resources. So our council has expressed interest in revitalizing the curriculum of several classes, specifically freshman seminar, which is an entry-level high school course for our freshman students. And so students have expressed concerns that this course has very shortcomings in introducing and adapting students with the emotional and academic rigor of those high school classes. Therefore, at our upcoming meeting, we will be joined by Chief Academic Officer Dr. Wild, as well as the Coordinator of Secondary School Guidance and Advisory, Ms. Poole, to discuss how we can continue to adapt our curriculum to be reflective of the dynamic student environment that we are in. Additionally, we look forward to expanding equitable access to resources and increasing administrative transparency with our students, especially within our guidance departments. Furthermore, our council will be working alongside Deputy Superintendent Dr. Prince to explore equitable transportation policies for low-income and ethnic minority communities. Additionally, in our last meeting, we have appointed a nominating committee to begin the process of selecting our vice chairman with student representatives from St. Lucy West Centennial High School, as does Port St. Lucy High School and Port Pierce Central High School. This council is expected to canvass across our student representatives to select the most appropriate individual and nominate them to be the vice chairman of our council. With numerous council members expressing interest in the position, we look forward to interviewing those council members and learning their passions and goals. As we learned yesterday, a leader without a succession plan is no leader, and so I'm excited to meet these student leaders and seeing how they will rise to the occasion and carry on our council's legacy after many of us graduate. Additionally, our council has dedicated time within our meetings to embrace student successes across the district. For instance, the renowned performance of our peers at Port St. Lucy High School with their Mamma Mia production, or St. Lucy West Centennial's High School's appreciation of Black History Month by selling student-designed T-shirts to embrace the African Dice Forum and commemorating African-American contributions to American culture through student-painted murals hung in their school library. By appreciating the success of our students, we hope to develop a more inclusive atmosphere for all. Our upcoming meeting will be held on February 22nd from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. at Lincoln Park Academy and will be hosted by the administration. Lastly, on behalf of the St. Lucy Public Schools Youth Advisory Council, I would like to congratulate Deputy Superintendent Dr. Prince for being selected as Superintendent Gent's successor as Superintendent of St. Lucy Public Schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Backa. Thank you for that report. We're going to continue to move through our items, and we have come up to the adoption of the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Second by Mr. Ingersoll and second by Mr. Kelly. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Superintendent, may we have your recommendation?
I recommend the Board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Board, the superintendent's recommendation is to approve the consent agenda items as committed.
Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, I'd like to pull one for a separate vote, 9.2.
We will pull 9.2 for separate vote. Okay, before we do that, though, let's have a motion and second for the remaining agenda items.
Madam Chair, move approval of consent agenda minus 9.2.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Well, we've already done that, so let's have that discussion.
I just want to ask the superintendent if he could amend 9.2 to add the fourth construction crew on there, Jack London &amp; Sons, so the work will be distributed amongst four, if you'd be willing to accept that, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, I accept that recommendation from Mr. Ingersoll.
That's my motion.
Okay, so we second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed that? Motion carries five zero. Our next agenda item is basically the informational reports. Okay, now in the charter school financial reports, you have them before you, Board Members, and they are presented for information-only, informational. No approval is needed for the charter school financial statement, none is required. This presentation and acceptance of the charter school financial statements is to demonstrate compliance with Section 1002.33. Superintendent reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening to everyone. First off, we would like to, this past couple of weeks ago, we had what's called the Academic Games, the Commissioner of Education's Academic Challenge, and we formatted it in an academic quiz show. Lydia Martin fulfills her lifelong goal to be a quiz show host, and she runs it, and we had five high schools participate, Westwood Academy, Centennial, Treasure Coasts, and Port St. Lucy High School, and Fort, let's see who?
Westwood.
Westwood, okay. And first place went to Treasure Coast High School, and I don't know, Christian, you're still here, and Christian served on that team. Christian spends more time in this boardroom than most of us. He's going to have to get him on the payroll. But it was great. It's a lot of fun. It's high-energy and competition, and it's a game show where the students buzz in with the questions. The questions are very, very difficult. I knew most of the answers to most of the questions. Not so sure about Dr. Prince. But anyway, the top individual scores will now move on to the state-level competition. That'll be at Disney at March 31st through April 2nd. The team coach will be Stephen Maxwell from Treasure Coast High School. He's an instructor there. And representing Treasure Coast High School will be Gabriela Gonzalez, Dominique Thomas, and Gabriel Baez. Lincoln Park Academy, Andrea Mato, and Jeremy Cartagena. And at Forest Pierce West Prep Academy, Sebastian Spence. So congratulations to them, and we wish them well as they go up and represent St. Lucy County in the state competition. Also, this past Saturday night, and we had our Night of the Stars, and it was, again, because of COVID, it was kind of a blended model. We had the, a lot of it pre-recorded, and then we had the live ceremony right here in the building where we announced the winners. And Teacher of the Year was John Rentschler from Samuel Gaines Academy, and he received $5,000 from Mid-Florida Credit Union. We appreciate them and Sharita Walker for being here. School-related Employee of the Year was Alicia Gomez from Manatee K-8. John Rentschler was from Sam Gaines Academy. And Distinguished Educator of the Year, Tamika Adams from Lawnwood Elementary, and outstanding first-year teacher, Uranie Guzman Ramirez from Samuel Gaines Academy. I also just want to give special recognition to, is Kevin still here? Where's Kevin? Kevin bolted out? There he is. To Kevin and Jane Whitaker, they were our MCs, and if you didn't see it, they sang a rendition of New York, which is, if you haven't seen it, you've got to see it. And Kevin, we will see that again sometime, so be ready for that. I also want to thank Lydia Martin, Craig, who's in the back sound room, Steve, Doug, Amy, Lauren, and Jamie, that's our Communications Department, for the fantastic job that they did. You have in front of you the program. This was printed by our own Edward in our print shop right here, and I want to thank Jackie Still here from the Ed Foundation and Tom Jones. Jackie, you know, we go around to all the school centers, and Jackie kind of coordinates that, and it's got the balloon. She took that job away from Lydia, and so she brings those things in, and she drives the big red Expedition truck and has a way of navigating the county and getting us there quickly, so I appreciate all that she does. And again, to the sponsors, Mid-Florida Credit Union. It was a great ceremony. It was a great night, and Mr. Rentschler is quite the teacher. We've been in his classroom a couple of times, very, very innovative and brings a lot of energy to the classroom, and he represents all of our teachers and what's best about St. Lucy County. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent. Attorney's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent. There is no attorney's report tonight.
Thank you, Attorney Shad. We're going to start with you, Mr. Ingersoll.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to touch on what Mr. Backa said, too, is Mamma Mia was an excellent performance at Port St. Lucy High School, and I want to thank Mr. Madden for all the time and dedication, which he gives to the community and to the students. Over 5,000 people attended that program, even our new superintendent and Mr. Gent, our old superintendent, still here. You're not old. No, no. And they're going to be doing Grease in the summer, so tryouts will be in about three weeks. And I also was at Fort Pierce Central on Friday, and it was really cool to see the tents of Indian River State College there and having a job, not a job fair, but like a career fair. And hopefully, it was a start of one, and hopefully it'll continue to all our high schools. It was very, very successful, I thought.
Thank you, Mr. In-
Madam Chair, I appreciate Mr. Ingersoll talking about the play. They do a remarkable job. I know Ms. Holly was there. I'm not sure who else had an opportunity to attend. I know Troy was there. But for Grease, that's the original, that was the original play that they did when the school opened 32 years ago. I was there as assistant principal. And what they are doing is bringing back the students that are now adults, and they're going to play some of the roles in the play itself as the adults in Grease. So it should be a good time. It'll be, I think, right around June 12th through the 15th. Well, we'll get that information out. But I appreciate Troy bringing that up and encourage the Board, if you get an opportunity this summer, to go check it out. It's remarkable.
I signed you up for Danny.
I want to be John Travolta's role.
Okay, can we move forward from this conversation? Okay, we're going to go right to Ms. Holly.
No report, Madam Chair.
Okay. Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, watching the stars, what a great show. I watched the whole show. They did cut out your number. They didn't let you sing, Mr. Gent. They cut that right out. That's a shame, maybe next year. And what a great show. It was like watching, it was like an HBO special or something. It was done so good, Lydia. Great job. I had almost turned the channel off because I saw this guy. I didn't recognize Dr. Perry. Kevin Perry had a long tie on, but that's okay. I turned it back, and it was Mr. Perry. And by the way, you can do both ties, Kevin, either one. You look good in either one. So it was a great show. I also heard that Mamma Mia play, that Debbie Hawley was there, my family was there, my wife and my daughter and the family, and they introduced her, and I heard she got a standing ovation. Big applause. So thanks for representing us at the play. And just one correction of misinformation from last night. I cannot let it go. I'm sorry, Mr. Prince, Dr. Prince, but it's Joe Pesci, not Danny DeVito. Please, okay? Get your stuff right. That's all I got. Thank you. And thanks for putting up with me, Dr. Prince.
Ms. Richardson, your report, please.
No report tonight.
Okay. I just want to say a special thank you and acknowledgement to the three guests that came on and recorded for the Speakers Bureau yesterday. In fact, during the day, there were three recordings for the Speakers Bureau. We are still moving forward with that program, and I always get such, I get such inspiration from it. And I hope that our television audience, as well as our everyone, St. Lucy County also gets that inspiration that I feel. These people come on and they open up their lives and they tell their story, and they talk about their challenges and things that they've had to go through, and yet they were able to overcome those challenges. And so we've had both of our superintendents and all of our board members, I think, have taken place a part of it. And so we just want to acknowledge those guests that we had yesterday. We had Dorothea Hare. She is the highwaysman, one of the women. I think there was only two or three women of the highwaysmen, and she came on and gave an incredible story of what it was like for her to come up in the days that she grew up in. And then we had Chief Operating Officer Brandon Noble, and his partner is Brian Garcia. Brandon is from St. Lucy County. He was born here. He went to our schools. He graduated from here. Now he has come back and has a business, the Remnant Construction Company. And then we also had a young lady by the name of Veronica Kiploidd, and she, again, had an incredible story. She's also from one of the companies here, right in St. Lucy County, Construction Company. At this time, we are going to get ready for our scheduled speakers. Okay, we're going to start with Ms. Dale Galliano, and I believe that you ladies know how it goes, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
No quotes tonight.
Attorney. They do have their five minutes, so we will please map that out. Thank you, Ms. Galliano.
Thank you, Dale Galliano, Port St. Lucy. I'd like to first to congratulate you on the big save last night after the mix-up of the workshop special meeting last week regarding Mr. Gent's retirement and his replacement. Needless to say, we are very happy that Dr. Prince is now on his way to being our new superintendent. superintendent, and we all know that should make the newspaper, right, Jack? We know forward, and we look forward to the continuation of the plan to keep the forward trajectory that we have had with the excellence that we have in our schools. But things have changed since 2015. Things are even more intense now, be it the bullying, depression, family dynamics, COVID, masks, isolation shootings, suicides, and the added feelings of confusion, rage, and fear in our kids. Trash has become normal in our televisions and social media and what's available on Google searches. All the same social justice rights and part of the emotional well-being of everybody creating our schools with some uncertainty. The horrifying thing is that part of our media centers, the books, that put our kids in a place where they don't know whether if they fit, should they fit, can they fit, and a young mind can create a false narrative and scenario because they haven't lived long enough or lived enough to understand or think the truth through. That we have neglected to protect our kids on this is no, we have also been put in a situation because a lot of this stuff came roaring up fast on us that we did not realize. We used to call it the boogeyman. He was under the bed, in the closet, but he never appeared. But not now. It's up front, in our face, and available to most of our vulnerable and impressionable our kids. It's pornography, sex trafficking, it's shooting, it's kill lists, it's things that honestly we have to say, one time we were able to say, not in my town, but we can now. There are some things that are happening. Some of it is here, but most of it is remaining hidden in the shadows. To bring you up to date, as per current policy and procedure, starting in December 14th through January 25th, I've turned in 20 books for review. Praise God, every one of them was pulled from the schools in December, and they're being in the process. Five books have been permanently pulled from our schools, but they are but one available in the public library. Score to date, 20 turned in, five removed in 42 days. Yes, we had Christmas, New Year's, weekends, but the main thing is that we're working on a policy and procedures from 1998. Let's face it, the current policy is a bit much for anyone and totally outdated. Now that we have settled with a future, having Dr. Prince, and at this time, we have now been able to get things written up and proper in the 21st century. How cool. Policy that, with reasonable guidelines, reasonable procedures, when it comes to our media centers' choices, knowing exactly who determines what is purchased, what is being bundled from their publishers, and of course, the access of the age and grade that we need to put these things through. Stopping everything that doesn't educate or strengthen our kids. Placing the parents in the mix with a signature or a verbal yes or no on certain books in our schools. Parents not only have the right, but the personal responsibility of the choices of their children. Let's make it easy for the parents to participate. Many are drowning in the day-to-day of things. Our schools shouldn't assume they don't care. Many just don't have the strength and the time with everything that's going on today. It's important and should be part of the big picture. Starting now, while we both have this, while we all have the strength, pardon me, and knowledge of both Mr. Gent and Dr. Prince, together they can write a clear pathway of policy to save our kids from the hidden agendas, from the filth, the pornography thing, the CRT, the possible emotional damages that could possibly happen.
Fifteen seconds?
Let St. Lucie County be the shining example in Florida for a policy that destroys the boogeyman under the bed and in the closet. Again, ladies and gentlemen, 2 Corinthians 5:10, "For all of us must appear before Christ to be judged by him."
Five minutes?
"We will each receive what we deserve according to everything we have done, good or bad, in the body of our lives, where we answer." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galliano. Our next scheduled speaker is Susan Sedino.
Mr. Gent, my name is Susan Sedino. I've been living in Port St. Lucie for 31 years, and I want to say that I put two sons through local high schools, both St. Lucie County high schools, at a time when our schools were at the lowest, and we were basically the lowest school system in the state of Florida. I just want to congratulate the board on their appointment of Dr. Prince as the next superintendent of St. Lucie County. Sometimes we do not appreciate what we have until it's gone, and we are blessed to know that this school board knew that as well. With that said, after the last school board meeting, someone posted the video of Dale on the Port St. Lucie Facebook site thanking you for banning of five books that we were trying to have removed from the schools in our county. The fallout from that post was unbelievable. The names we recalled, the condemnation and the criticism we received for trying to protect the children from the smut in these books was unbelievable. We were accused of attempting to take down Black History and Dr. Martin Luther King, who, by the way, I have great admiration for. The accusations included being racist, homophobic, et cetera. No matter how many times we tried to justify and explain, we were not taking down history, and we have a strong commitment to just remove the pornography from being available in our schools, we finally had to remove ourselves from the group. I just want to take this time to clarify that we are not trying to ban books. Doing so would be a blatant violation of freedom of speech, freedom of the press, or however you want to approach it. The First Amendment, for now, gives us that right, although some of the books also border on the violation of Florida statutes 847.012, especially in the lower grades. When a movie is released, it is given a rating, general audience, PG, PG-13, parent struck an R for restricted. Netflix, Prime also have restrictions on what parents allow their children to watch. Apps on phones have the ability for parents to block certain contents, as well as YouTube. The books in our schools that we're trying to have removed from allowing our children to have access to do not have these restrictions. They are not rated, and the parents of these children, for the most part, do not have the ability to make the decision as to whether they want their children to have access to this type of pornographic material. I'm sure that most parents of children in K through 12 would never knowingly allow their child to go to a movie to watch Fifty Shades of Grey, or, dating myself here, Deep Throat, nor would the tickets sell, theaters sell tickets to minors to go see those movies. Why should a 10-year-old in our school system be allowed to go to the media center to check out one of these books without their parents' permission? If the school board or the public feel that this much should not be removed and that they believe that young, impressionable children should have access to these books, then maybe we should have the same restrictions added to them, like the movies, Netflix, et cetera. The books would be only available if the parents sign a written release allowing their child to have access to the book. Allowing the children to read these books without parental consent is another way of removing parental rights over their children's education. Parents have a right to know what their minor, and I repeat, minor, children are being taught and have access to, having access to pornographic books in the schools is no different. Thank you for allowing me to clarify my position.
And thank you so much, Ms. Sedino. We appreciate what you have said and working with you ladies to get those books straightened out. Thank you. My last person that's here scheduled is Ms. Eddie Evans. Welcome, Ms. Evans.
My name is Eddie Evans, and I live in Port St. Lucie. A lot of questions come to mind when I go through the books that are available in our media centers and part of the curriculum in all of our schools. Questions like, who makes the final decisions on the books? Who is this person or persons responsible? Who processes the books when they arrive? Is it true that publishers always send freebies, and are these part of anything or a special-driven agenda? And who checks these books? Is there a set point of guideline for the placement of the books? Is it grade, age, or personal agenda? We all know there are state laws against pornography and CRT in schools. How did these books that have been pulled get on the shelves and in our schools in the first place? Who gave the okay for that to happen? Now, some of these books are older and have been around for years, and they're on the banned book list. There are banned book lists online. Who checks these things? Is there someone in charge of processing, that backchecking, the banned books list, and what is against the Florida law, the state law in Florida? It seems to me that the books coming into our media centers, if they were screened more carefully, it would save time and energy for everyone. I believe the policies are going to be revised and will hopefully help the situation and all concerned, but I have to say, the sooner the better. This is essential. Our country today is in a turmoil with parents and school boards in conflict. I hope that doesn't happen here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Thank you for all that have been in attendance today. Congratulations to our next superintendent, Dr. Jonathan Prince. I know that we're all looking forward, when that time comes, to work with you to ensure that we have the best school district in the state of Florida. At this time, we are adjourned.